Good morning, everyone. Bow your heads, please. Father, we come before you today to say thank you for grace and mercy. We thank you, Lord God, for another opportunity to get it right. And we just ask that you would be with us all as we conduct the business of county government this day. In Jesus's name, we pray, amen.
Good morning. Our visitors today are Christie Thornton from EMA, Sheriff Derek Cunningham, Deputy Administrator Kendall Anderson, Mike Dunn with Stiefel, Neil Wright with Liberty Bank, and municipal advisors Sharon Macon and Larry Day with Daylight Capital Advisors, Executive Director Jeff Reynolds with the YMCA, Executive Director Charity Alpert with CASA, County Extension Coordinator Jimmy Smitherman, and 4H Youth Ambassador Carrington Robertson, and Founder Denise Dukes of the Southeast Artists Collaboration. Christie.
Good morning. We come to you today seven hundred and thirty-two days since our first meeting at EMA, when moments before a press conference, we got our first case of COVID. Today, we are at fifty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-nine cases total for Montgomery County. For two thousand twenty-two, let's keep it in real numbers and something we're focused in. We've had fourteen thousand six hundred and four cases this year. We've also lost ninety-seven of our county citizens. Far as vaccination goes, we've had one hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-one people at least get one dose of their COVID-19 vaccine. The second dose, or the completing the series, is one hundred and two thousand seven hundred and ten. Total vaccinations, to include some of those boosters, is two hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-nine doses. We had to operate the warming center again this weekend. I don't know if y'all noticed it. It was a little bit chilly overnight, Saturday night and Sunday. And I hate to pop smoke and leave as soon as we're done reporting, but we have an appointment at the magistrate's office to sign a warrant on someone that attacked myself and my staff. And since he couldn't be arrested the other night, even though he was in custody and taken to jail, we are going to go handle that business today. Something to look forward to tomorrow. We got some potential severe weather coming in, and we just wanted to make sure by nose. There's no threat as of right now for any kind of tornadic activity, but we could potentially have some quarter-sized hail. So if you have a vehicle, you might need to park it in the garage this week. They're saying rain from one PM to eight PM tomorrow. We know we're gonna have it all day today, but today's just rain and showers, and tomorrow will be the thunderstorms and potential for severe weather. Any questions?
When is hail?
Tomorrow, one to eight. It says south central or south portion of central Alabama, but that does include Montgomery County.
Do you have any law enforcement at those warming centers? Anybody there? Police officers or something?
They stopped by, sir.
Nobody posted?
No, sir. The, we have some guys that are on the Thursday, Friday, Saturday assignment for MPD that stop by quite frequently, but we do not have one posted, no, sir. But like Commissioner, I'm sorry.
That might help.
It would be great, but luckily, we had a large gentleman that was one of the other guests that helped diffuse the situation until law enforcement was able to arrive.
Well, maybe, I mean, I don't know. If the city can't help, maybe we can get the sheriff to do something to help us out.
Well, like Commissioner Walker said, we're five days away from spring. So hopefully, we'll just go into our severe weather season where we could potentially have to open for tornado watch, tornado warning, and any kind of hurricane evacuations that we have over the Gulf Coast this year.
It's something to think about, though, next year. That, you should, you should, if you're gonna do something like that, you should feel safe doing it. No way you can feel safe if you have any type of issues, and it's up to us to try to make it safe for you.
Well, we've had offers for some mental health, because obviously, most of the people that come have some kind of mental health issue, chemical dependency, and so that's always an issue, but no one has shown up yet, and so that's always been the issue. I appreciate it. Yes, sir. And Commissioner Singleton, the radio shop team did get out to those sirens, and they were just dead batteries, so we got those squared away last week. Y'all have a great day.
All right, we'll now go over the items to be considered during the formal session. We'll consider an alcohol license application for Latino festival on March nineteenth. Consider inmate access medical policy renewal for risk management. Consider amendment number two to a contract with Horn LLP. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Does anyone have anything to add? Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue. Are there any additions there?
On the designated, we had, we had, the other day, when we cut off short, we left out a group, I think, that merits some consideration out of the joint portion of it. But I hate this group. We got that in front of us.
Yeah, they want to buy two Tahoe, two vans for transportation?
Yeah.
Any discussion on that?
I, I, I support it. I think that the work that they're doing in the neighborhoods that they're working in, they're being effective. And this is gonna, this is only gonna help them.
Any questions about that one?
Do we know what our, our recent history is with these guys? We did something.
We gave them twenty thousand last year for community youth service programs. This is, I think, is earmarked for transportation for two vans, so it won't be something that we, won't have to do it again next year.
What are they vans for?
To transport, transportation.
Transport who?
The members of the.
Sorry, I'm trying to read it. Look quickly.
He was here, he was here that, that we.
Oh, that's what I was remembering.
Yeah, and he gave us the words in the back, back here.
We talked about the, the issues that they were having transporting the kids from place to place because of the activities that just been.
I was just concerned about the high mileage on the vehicles that they are contemplating buying. I would just hope that they would have another option as it relates to some low mileage vehicles. I know that the Board of Education wanted to work with them, but I'm hearing that nothing happened on that in terms of communication. And so I'm just concerned about these vehicles, this high mileage, and whether or not they're gonna last anytime.
Well, we're not gonna maintain them.
Is this the gentleman that came to our meeting a couple meetings ago?
One time asked for some vehicle, I. I think it's up to them to check out what, whether or not the vehicles are on the way. They can't come back and ask us to fix them once, once they buy them. They can ask, but.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Sure.
Sir?
Any objection to that?
I don't, I don't.
I'm good with that.
We're good with that.
The amount requested?
Yes, ma'am, from the joint.
All right, and we've had a request that the commissioners please speak into your microphones or move them a little closer. It's hard for our audience to hear.
Okay. And then we have one more, Troy University, Rosa Parks Museum for June tenth celebration. They have a request of five thousand dollars. Is there any objection to doing that through the joint?
I don't have any objection.
No, that's a small amount compared to the budget. I think about twenty-five thousand dollar budget for that event, so.
Thirty, I think, is the total. So five thousand from joint, Florence.
Are there any other additions?
Commissioner Harris, the fire AAU, you and I both have done that, helped them a little bit in the past. Do you wanna, you and I do something for them on that one, too? The A, the fire for the Bell Road YMCA? You wanna do, I'll do a thousand if you wanna do a thousand from my personal account.
Yeah, a thousand from, have to back that up and get it out of agency.
Yeah, both of us, yeah.
Both coming from agency?
Yes, ma'am, a thousand, a thousand apiece.
Everybody got this Montgomery County Historical Society?
Yeah.
I haven't had a chance to read it.
They've asked us to help fund their executive director position.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think we used to do that sixty-forty with the city. Does it say why we stopped? Like, what happened? I haven't, I didn't.
No, that's one, that's, like I said, we, I think we all just got this, so let's, let's look at this, and we'll talk about this next meeting.
Yeah, and they asked us to do this last year. I'll need to remember what we told them then. This is not a new request.
All right.
I think that's all, Florence.
All right. All right, next will be a budget change request number eight from engineering. Consider position fill requests for the detention facility for three corrections officer trainees. Consider a position fill request for personnel for an administrative support specialist. Consider position fill requests for the sheriff's office for two deputy sheriff trainees and a part-time deputy sheriff. And consider travel training requests for the commission, community corrections, detention, risk management, and the sheriff. That I believe is all of, all of our items. And so now we will hear from the sheriff as represented, well. You're here to consider amendment number two to a contract with Gulf State's distributors for tasers and accessories?
Yes.
You are also here to discuss an unbudgeted position fill request for fleet parts and service controller?
Yeah, that's at, at our maintenance shop. We hadn't been able to fill the regular clerk position, not at the position level that it was at, so we went in and that person has to do the ordering of the parts and everything else. So we just got with personnel, and this is the position that we came up with, and hopefully, we'll be able to fill it.
So this job, this, this place, well, you're doing away with one job. You combine it.
Yeah, we had a clerk, and she, she left, and then we're trying to hire, so.
Those duties would be on this job?
Yes.
What was it, fourteen thousand dollars a year? On the budget? I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
Next agenda. Then you also have information about your community events.
Yeah, I was just, you know, coming to you all to see if you all can, can help us with our community events that we're having for the summer. Camp and everything else, Easter egg hunt, you name it, we do it. Start it back up.
Don't we always do that?
Yeah, but I just had to come and ask for it again.
But we've helped you in the past, or you just do it on your own basis?
Well, y'all helped me, too. Y'all always help.
I thought we always helped.
And I appreciate it again this year. I'm just thanking y'all in advance.
Oh, you think it's gonna last?
Yeah.
What was, what was the request for it?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five.
And that's for what, five events, four, five events?
That's for, yeah, that's for camp, that's national night out, that's all the stuff we do. Everything.
I'd be, I'd be willing to dig into my designated if we don't wanna get it off of joint.
Damn it. Y'all make me run across the room.
You should've done that when you came in. You should've run across the room when you came in the back door.
I was doing that, like, you know, you call those performers out, and they walk out right there.
Yeah, the sheriff's, the sheriff's activities here are all, community events are all throughout the county, so it would be my recommendation, we just do it out joint.
I'm all right with that, too.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, where's that bill that you had in, in the legislature about raising money for your department?
It should've come out next year. I mean, it should come out this week, I'm sorry.
You're gonna need any money after that bill passed?
Well, yeah. That ain't for me, that's for nonprofits.
Any objection to doing it out joint revenue?
We'll add five thousand dollars out of joint for the appropriate fund in the sheriff's office.
Well, it's twenty-five thousand.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was stuttering when you said five, but I ain't saying nothing.
I was still thinking five-five.
Oh, okay.
Do you have anything else, Sheriff?
No. Hey, I thank you all. Appreciate y'all's always in advance, and to those of you all I hadn't spoke to this morning, good morning. Thank y'all.
Next, we'll hear from Deputy Administrator Kendall Anderson.
Good morning. While I can't come in from the back, like the sheriff made his entrance. What you have in front of you is for the information, information session. Previously, we discussed additional funding for our emergency rental assistance program. The state has contacted Horn. Horn has contacted us with the ability to receive an additional eight million dollars from the state's pot that they will transfer over to us, and that will allow us to continue to help more residents who need funding for emergency rental assistance.
Was that eight million, Kendall, or was it two million plus our six million?
No, this is on top of that. This is a whole new pot, eight million more dollars coming from the state ERA two amount. The state is having a little bit of trouble spending theirs, and so we're going to be able to get that eight million dollars to continue to help Montgomery County residents.
This is on top of the nine point five million, right?
On top of eight. On top of the eight that we already have.
The eight that we already have.
Yes, sir. So this is an additional eight, so we're looking at sixteen. Right, so in total, twenty-two million dollars, ERA one, ERA two, and then the state's ERA, eight million dollars that they're gonna give us, so twenty-two million dollars total.
Okay, so is this, we're gonna be able to reopen it, or is this gonna service just applications that are already in?
We do have several applications that are already in, but we have been given every indication that we will be able to reopen with significant level of funding. So we will be able to get new applicants, yes, sir.
So what we're approving today has nothing to do with this additional eight million you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay.
That will come at the next commission meeting, you'll approve the eight million. This meeting, I need, next meeting, eight million.
And the percentage they're charging, is that gonna be the same, or we're trying to negotiate that as well?
That is up to you all as commissioners.
Okay, all right. And this, the ones we're approving today, the one that's on the agenda for today, that's gonna open up the process again, 'cause I understand you say they closed the door on any new applications?
Currently, the doors will stay closed. We have more applicants than we have money. Again, as we discussed prior to, at the end of the last meeting, we're gonna process the applications all the way through, and then if there's money left over at the end of what we currently have, then there may be that opportunity, but we have to process the applications, we have to contact landlords, we have to contact tenants to get them to do everything we can. At a certain point, you know, we're, if we're unable to contact them, they don't wanna finish, move on to the next application. Once we clear everybody out, then we can potentially look at that. But with the funding that we'll have, with this eight million dollars, that should provide us the opportunity to help more people, and we will be able to reopen that application process back up.
But the process of the current applications, that has not stopped. They'll continue to process the ones that are already.
Yes, no, we have not stopped processing applications. They're still being processed, just no new application. Yes.
And in order to receive the money from the state, we'll have to have, there'll be an MOU to be executed, which we have not yet received.
Thank you.
Now we'll hear from Mike Dunn, Neil Wright, Larry Day, Sharon Macon, and Clint Graves.
Good morning. The resolution we have before you is the next step in the proposed issuance of the Montgomery County Public Building Authority's warrants for the purposes of financing certain capital improvements to county facilities, including specifically the jail, and then potentially taking advantage of the refunding of the, of the Public Building Authority's two thousand fifteen warrants for interest rate savings. Resolution authorizes preparation of a preliminary official statement, which is the offering document for the warrants and for a warrant purchase agreement between the county, the authority, and the underwriters. The parameters for the warrants set by this resolution would be that these are fixed rate warrants. The warrants would be limited obligations of the public building authorities secured by the revenues generated from the lease between the county and the authority. And the warrants would not exceed forty-five million dollars and would not exceed a term of more than thirty years. Finally, the resolution authorizes the chairman or vice chairman to execute the warrant purchase agreement with respect to the warrants upon the sale. The final step would be we would come back after the sale of the warrants and have the county commission approve final pricing.
What's the net expectation on the refunding?
The refunding's refunding about eight million dollars worth of your series two thousand and fifteen bonds. It's a partial refunding. We're not refunding all of them. That generates savings of over five hundred thousand dollars, and percentage savings is over six percent. If you compare that to the negative arbitrage, it's about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So it's a refunding we've been looking at for about the last two years and watching, and it is through the PBA, so it's fairly easy to add it into this transaction if you guys choose to do so.
Is it a good time to do that, though?
Well, it's, normally, when we're looking at a refunding, some of the criteria we're gonna look at is, what's the percentage savings? And the percentage savings here are over six percent, you know? We look at how those savings dollars compare to what we refer to as negative arbitrage, and we want the savings to exceed that. In this case, the savings are over five hundred thousand, and the negative arbitrage is about two hundred and thirty thousand. If you don't do it now, it's a two thousand and fifteen issue, and you'll have opportunities to refund it in the future. So it's just a matter of whether you wanna take some interest rate risk off the table now, or you would prefer to wait.
You know, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking, we're thinking. We, we topped out the warrants at forty-five million, and that's plenty. I mean.
That includes the refund.
The forty-five million includes the five hundred thousand dollars, or two hundred and some thousand?
Yeah, it's, it's an allowance of about thirty-five million for the new, new money, and then it's about nine million on the refunding, so.
Yeah, and let me just add, just for what Mike said, that forty-five thou, forty-five million does include the refunding. And when we look at the refund, is that, that six point nine percent net present value savings as a percentage? Anything over three percent is a rule of thumb that says that that's a deal that should be looked at, so we're two times that amount. And also, when you look at the negative arbitrage being around two hundred and fifty thousand and savers being around five hundred thousand, we're two times that amount also. So from my perspective as a financial advisor, it's, it's definitely a deal that the board should give some serious consideration to.
I know, we looked at this about two years ago, and you made the recommendation then against refunding at that time, and, but you feel now is the time to.
Well, when you hit those kind of numbers, the economics suggests you ought to take it.
Exactly.
So it's, it's really just a matter of whether you wanna take some interest rate risk off the table, bank some savings. Again, if you don't do it, they'll, you'll continue to look at this for years to come.
And when you continue, and when you continue to look at it, you gotta also be mindful of where you feel interest rates. We, we, none of us have a crystal ball, but we can see that rates are rising with inflation, so that's just something to consider.
And so the savers that y'all are talking about, we still get the savings even when we consider the fees that you all are charging, and I'm talking about all of you who represent different entities.
That five hundred thousand, and it was based off of interest rates at the time, so it's still a moving target, but it definitely includes the cost of issuance, issuance of all the professionals involved.
And even with the interest rate that we're paying on the new money, all of that being considered, we still saving money?
Yeah, because it's two, it's two deals. The refunding is, the savings by itself, so to answer your question, yes, but the, the numbers that we spoke about includes the new money along with the refunding.
So I just wanna be clear, only thirty-five million, that is just for the, the construction, the rebuilding, et cetera, et cetera. So we hadn't, we're not borrowing any more than thirty-five million for infrastructure development. Okay, I got a little confused about that. I like to see the numbers on the paper, you know, I can't, yeah, I don't see that on paper yet.
Well, I would like to request from the commission if we could waive rules today and get this started. As y'all stated, I don't wanna keep waiting. We've waited a while, and I don't wanna keep waiting, 'cause interest rates, I don't believe are gonna come down. They've already gone up from the first time we, we started discussing this. So if there's no objection, I would like to waive rules today and move forward with this.
I don't have any objection with that.
Before we go further, Cheryl, anything coming out of the, the money that, what is that I'm referring to, the ten million dollars? Is any of that money gonna be used for any of what we're talking about today? Well, I just want to be sure before I agree to waive the rules that we're not trying to put that money into this. Well, I just want to be sure, before I agree to wa- waive the rules, that we're not trying to put that money into this project as well? Okay. Everybody's saying no.
No, that, that had been discussed at all.
I have no objection.
Okay, alright.
Any objections to waiving rules?
No, let's, we'll move on.
Okay, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Jeff Reynolds with the YMCA.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I'm joined by Daryl Woods, and, um, so what we're talking to y'all about today is, and we first just wanna thank y'all for the long relationship the YMCA here in Montgomery has, has, has had with the county, and, um, we've been able to work together to, to really, for the benefit of, of many of our citizens. What we're talking about today is, um, Alabama's first-class pre-K program. Um, and that, um, Alabama's program is, uh, touted as the best in the country in terms of quality. Numerous research studies have shown that students who participate are less likely to repeat a grade, require remedial education, be chronically absent, or have serious disciplinary issues. Um, at the same side, they're more likely to graduate from high school, go on to college, get higher-paying salaries as adults, and stay out of prison and off welfare. Um, and so our goal, the state's goal, is to have, um, access to seventy percent of the four-year-olds in the state to have access to, to this pre-K. Um, currently, Montgomery County is at forty percent, um, and there are sixty-seven classrooms, I think y'all have some, some information on that. Uh, ten of those sixty-seven classrooms are run by the YMCA, um, and we do those in several, several of our locations, and also in a partnership with, uh, the Housing Authority in two of their locations. But what we're talking about doing is, 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 is joining together in a partnership between the county, the YMCA, and the, um, State Department of Early Childhood Education in providing a classroom, um, in the Ramer area, um, at the old South Montgomery County, you know, building. Um, and so, um, the way this kinda works is that the grantor is the State Department of Educa- of Early Childhood Education, um, the YMCA is the grantee, and then the county would be providing the site. Um, and there's also, um, so the relationship is basically is between the state and the YMCA, and the YMCA and the county. Um, and so in those relationships, uh, we will be supplying, would be a grant to supply, um, two teachers, we would ha- house eighteen, up to eighteen children, um, down there, and we would be trying to figure out how to work together to have an after-school program, after-school is very important in this, because, uh, sites that don't have an after-school program, it, it can be a real burden for parents, uh, when they're, they're, you know, when they're working. And so, um, this is kind of our, our idea, the timeline of the grant is we would be making a grant application with the state by April fifteenth. Um, we wait for the legislature to kinda pass their, their, their monies, um, in that, in May or June, and then as soon as, uh, the first year's kinda crazy, as soon as this would happen, we would have, um, we would start registering children, um, hiring staff, we'd have two staff, a lead teacher and an auxiliary teacher, uh, training those staff, getting DHR license, and then trying, the goal would be to open the first day of the MPS school schedule in August.
So Jeff, what you need from us is the facility?
Well, the facility, and, and the way the grant works is there's, there's a match, um, that I think currently is about twenty-five percent of the grant, and that match would be met through the YMCA and through the county, uh, use of utilities, uh, would go towards that match, um, we'd have to, we, we'll be supplying food, which we do that through our food grant, uh, so the, between the facility, um, and the, and the, um, the match.
So it's in kind, you can match in kind?
You, yes, it can be in kind or, or cash, depending on just how the budget shakes up.
And, and you can make it up with food and, uh, and utilities?
Yeah, food, food can go, be part of that, food, utilities, you know, trash, just, you know, a lot, a lot of different things. We have not had a problem with the, with the match in the past.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a great program, this will be a tremendous blessing to that area. James, you got room, I know, in there to do it, so...
Oh, yeah, yeah, we had, uh, softball and T-ball practice last night, and this is gonna be our first year, we're gonna try to do a tiny tot T-ball, and we've got twenty-one kids registered so far, between the ages of three and four.
So...
So all you're asking for is facility, space?
And utilities, of course, they'll run the power and the water.
This is in, in South Montgomery?
Yeah, in the, yeah, in our, um, community center down south Montgomery. So this is something we'd put on the next agenda to approve?
Yes.
The next agenda.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Next we'll hear from Charity Alpert with CASA, CASA, sorry.
Good morning. Um, I emailed our update, do you guys, does anyone else wanna paper copy? I brought some extras. Okay, great. Uh, well, first of all, I just wanna say thank you for your support last year, you guys were early supporters of our program, and, um, really just a huge, um, blessing for us getting started, as you know, a new nonprofit needs all the help we can get. So I tried to give you guys some numbers of what we were able to accomplish last year. We were appointed to thirty-three children last year, and, uh, served twenty families. We were able to train forty-six CASA volunteers, so what that looks like in actual operation is we were able to reunify six children to their parents, assist with that, we had one, um, find permanency through adoption, and we're able to place nine with relatives for kinship, guardianship. Um, and then a little bit more deeply, we helped with school, um, we helped with healthcare, mental health care, counseling, and we're just advocating for those needs, so we're the ones kind of throwing up the flag, saying, hey, this child needs this, and continuing to work on it until they get it. So you see, we have forty-four people last year supporting our work, that's individual donors, all the way to private businesses, um, foundation grants, as well as you all. So what the difference this year is, um, our presiding family court judge made a rule a couple of weeks ago that now every new child that comes into care will automatically be appointed a CASA. Um, whereas last year, it was when the judges thought, um, it would be a good fit. So now we expect our numbers to double.
Charity, I want you to pause real quick.
Sure.
Give us a, a, a one-minute reminder for the commission, as well as everyone listening, what exactly, um, CASA does and what it means, and, and what this, this volunteer does, and their connectedness with these children.
Sure. So court-appointed special advocates, um, is a voice for a child who's been removed from their home due to abuse or neglect. So these children, foster care or relative care, could be group home. And the judge appoints us, and then our program, and then I take one of our trained volunteers, and I pair them with that child. And they go and meet with that child monthly, um, they get to know everybody involved in that child's life, so they're talking to the biological parents and trying to help assist them with their services that they need to accomplish. Um, they're talking to foster parents and teachers, counselors, anyone that touches that child's life we're involved with and we're communicating with, to make sure those things don't fall through the cracks. And so, that's the overall...
Do you work, do you work with the guardian at litem, or you?
We do.
Are you, so you don't take the place of the guardian?
That's correct.
You work with the guardian?
Every child in Alabama gets a guardian at litem, which is an attorney, but the ones that get a CASA have both. So we work with everyone involved in the case, from the caseworkers, to the guardian at litems, to mom and dad's attorney, um, everyone.
You said you have forty-eight CASA volunteers trained?
We trained forty-six last year, we've continued training this year.
Okay, so approximately, you know, so now if the judges are saying every child gets a CASA, what number are you looking at?
It's a good question. We've, we've been appointed twenty-two since you made that rule, which was January first. And so we're, um, currently advocating for fifty-five right now.
Okay.
Um, now, you know, depending on the case, we might have one CASA volunteer to three siblings, so it's not necessarily that we need that many, um, volunteers. But we have been, you know, really supported well by the community, we have a lot of people looking to volunteer, which is, which is great. Um, so we do have that, um, train base that we're pulling from right now, and we're continuing to train as well.
Other than donations, how else are y'all funded? Y'all getting anything other money besides donations?
Yes, sir, so we have a federal grant, um, from VOKA, the Victims of Crime, that comes through our state, Alabama State Network, and they funnel it to our programs, and we're funded at eighty to eighty-five percent at certain line items. That's, you know, that's the majority. We have free office because of you guys letting us have free space, so that helps a lot as well.
Yeah, uh, I was looking at your report that you sent.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for sending that, it's very good.
Mm-hmm.
Could you send us the budget, updated budget?
Yeah, and I have copies, would you guys like that today?
Yeah, I would love to.
Yeah. This is, um, for this fiscal year that we're in right now.
And we'll take into consideration your request again.
Please, what's, what's the request?
Requesting ten thousand, we did ten thousand last year, but we can kinda look at the budget, maybe, uh, discuss that for the next meeting.
So just to clarify on that budget, that was, that is, um, has to be turned in by the first of the fiscal year, which is October, before we had that rule, so we are growing much bigger than, than that. But any other questions I can, I can answer?
No, we'll look at this, and we'll get together, and we'll let you know something next meeting.
Okay, thank you so much. Alright, sounds great, thank you.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
It's really making a positive impact.
Next Jimmy Smitherman will introduce us to 4H Youth Ambassador Carrington Robertson.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to, uh, recognize one of our 4H, uh, outstanding youth here in Montgomery County. This is, uh, Ms. Carrington Robertson that is passing you out some information, she calls it my, my 4H story. Uh, her agent that has been working with her, of course, is Ms. Shannon Andrus, y'all all know Ms. Shannon. So, uh, I'll let Shannon have a word, and then we'll let Carrington have a word of...
Words cannot express our pride and excitement about the opportunity to touch the life of a young lady who's going to help change the world. Carrington came to our acquaintance through Alabama 4H as a summer 4H camper, and in that time, she has demonstrated amazing communication and leadership skills. She continues to excel not only in every setting that she finds herself in, but she has now been selected from amongst many, many Alabama 4H applicants to travel to Washington DC to meet with our legislators as an advocate for Montgomery County, and for 4H, and for the Alabama Cooperative Extinction System. So at this time, I just want to, uh, recognize her parents, if they would stand, please. And, uh, if they would like to speak a word or two just a moment, uh, I would like to invite them to the podium. Very good.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us. Um, so we are so excited, um, I'm Etika Robertson, and this is my husband, Marvis Robertson, and of course Carrington. Uh, she's shared a little bit about herself, and I don't want to take up her time, but, um, the opportunity to go and represent and, uh, model the way for other young people coming back to Alabama and sharing those experiences in Washington DC is, is our hope, so I just wanted to say that, thank you, guys.
Alright, so as you already know, my name is Carrington, and, I'm sorry. I'm very excited to go to Washington DC where I get to talk to young leaders like me, and talk about food nutrition, agriculture, and food safety. You have any questions for me?
What school, you're eleventh grade, what school?
So...
Which school do you attend now?
Stan Hope, Alma High School.
Stan Hope, Alma, okay.
For those of us who've been around a while, could you remind us what 4H stands for?
Well, if we could, we, we could lead the pledge with y'all, y'all don't have to stand, but we pledge our heads to their thinking, our hearts to their loyalty, our hands to larger service, our hearts to bettering, for our club, our community, our country, and our world.
Thank you.
Congratulations, pretty exciting to get to go, so...
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations, I know we'll be well represented.
You will.
Would it be possible for her to get a picture with the commissioner?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
I would love that.
Always liked pictures.
Next we'll hear from Denise Dukes with the Southeast Artist Collaboration.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Southeast Artist Collaboration has been, um, established here in Montgomery, Alabama, since two thousand seventeen. And we primarily work with youth in the arts, um, arts integration in the classrooms, but we also integrate with health and wellness and nutritional programs throughout the schools as well. We, um, we have three programs that we run currently. Um, one is a nutritional program, as I mentioned, in which we work with low-income families or food desert areas to provide, um, tower gardens for the children, and this implements a STEM program in helping them to grow these gardens. There are twelve towers that produce three hundred and sixty-six fruits and vegetables and herbs and things like that at a very cost-effective way, so, um, we just got approved for a nine hundred thousand dollar, um, grant to provide that to the schools, within the schools. We also have a, um, Health and Wellness Center, which is more like an indoor wellness retreat, that we established in two thousand eighteen called Luxury Body Sculpting. This center actually provides services free of charge to the community to help reduce stress levels, and also to help the body to detox. Uh, we use chromotherapy lighting, we use sound therapy, we use full-spectrum infrared sauna, which helps the body to detox, and also heals the tissues in the bodies for his hypertension, diabetes, and things of that nature that can be plaguing our society. We also have zero-gravity full-body massage chairs that are, that are strictly custom-designed to actually heal the body, so it's no hands-on, especially since coronavirus came around, COVID. Um, but our members have really enjoyed the, the peace and quietness of their escape. We ma- mainly, we primarily service our aging community, our first responders, and our veterans, because those are the members of our society that are extremely high-stressed, and they have limited mobility, some of them have limited mobility because of injuries and so forth, so our center actually serves for them to use the center, to come in and just de- unplug from the world, because as we know, stress brings about a lot of illnesses in, in our, in our bodies, and in our mental state of being. So it's a way that our, our people come in, so what we're doing today is, the program, we also have, like I said, the Urban Healing Gardens, but that's another program that we do, but we have separate funding for that. We have VIP sponsors that help us to keep the center open, we have been here in May, it'll be four years, our center has been up and running. Um, we were not... We were not really affected that hard by COVID. Miraculously, we did install a system to help with air purification center and things like the air purification as our members came in.
Where are you located?
Right off of Vaughn Road is 8448 Crossland Loop, right off of Past Pepper Tree. Mm-hmm, and it's very quaint. In fact, people call it Montgomery's, our members call it the Montgomery's best-kept secret.
But how do you qualify to be a member? I mean, you say it's free.
Well, it's free Tuesday through Friday from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. For, we have a staff member that's there to assist our members to come in, the members, the free members to come in. And then our VIP sponsors, they pay, like, they donate $35 a month to actually have 24/7 access, 365 days. So they have their own code. We have a very sophisticated system that gives them their own code. So once they're orientated, they actually come in and use the center and just de-stress. And so it has really taken down all of our members. We've served actually over 1,339 members just in the past year in the center. And it was more, of course, during the major part of COVID, numbers went down because we had to close down. But ever since we've been open, we have had a very good number of our members. Like I said, most of the people that have been in accidents have limited mobility, can't run, can't walk, knee injuries, back injuries, things of that nature, hypertension, so forth and so forth. So, did someone have a question?
Yeah, I came to the opening dinner.
Yes, you did. Yes, sir.
Your mama's famous. Is it your mother that's famous?
It's me.
No, who was, you're the famous one. I knew somebody in your family was famous, but I didn't remember who it was.
Yes, I was the first Miss Black Alabama USA in 1987. And I'm from Montgomery originally. I got my formal training in dance from Cleveland Avenue YMCA. I graduated from, I graduated from Carver. I was a feature baton twirler there. I was a lead dancer on Soul Train. I was on The Heat of the Night. I was in Rocky IV. I was on Fame. So my background is very extensive in the arts, but I like to integrate the arts into nutrition and wellness because that is very, very important. And especially with the rising situations with COVID and things of that nature. A lot of our aging, I'm 58, so these are my concerns that the stress levels can actually bring upon so many different illnesses in the body. So this retreat, this wellness center is not just a gym. It is not a gym. It is somewhere so people can come and get a nice massage without having to pay $50 or $60, relax under the stars. We have chromotherapy lighting for 32 Hz frequency, which puts the body back in balance with the earth. So we use a lot of holistic methods and methodologies to help our, our citizens in our community to, to detox and de-stress. And so we have, our first machines that we bought when I started, I started with my own money. And we bought three chairs in the center. And they were the higher-end zero-gravity massage chairs, but they were not the commercial brand. And so therefore, they did not have all the warranty. One of the chairs, I did pay the $10,000 for because it was custom-designed, and it is commercial, and it has lasted. Two of our machines, our zero-gravity massage chairs, are not working, so we need those replaced right now because our members are really, really needing those. And it has really helped them. They say it's the best massage and relaxation they have ever felt in their lives. So we have that. And then we have, we would like to also upgrade our air purification and sanitation machine because now we're getting back to normal. People are starting to call in and wanting to come in more. So we need to upgrade our system a little bit. And also our ADT, our security system and alarm system as well because we've had some issues, you know, all over Montgomery. But our members are usually, like I said, the aging community, so we want them to feel safe. And we have a lot of military that come to our center as well. But we have a lot of low-income seniors that come, that cannot afford it. So those are the ones that come in at free of charge, and they are assisted on anything. We have a whole-body vibration workout unit. They just stand on and they get an hour workout in 10 minutes. And it doesn't affect the joints, no stress on the joints. It builds bone density in the body. It stimulates the lymphatic system, so it gets the detox. So those members who can't do a lot of movement and things of that nature, that machine is very helpful for them to get circulation and get movement in the body, to get the oxygen flow going to the red blood cells so that the body can heal itself.
You, I remember now, the... Now, yeah, I remember Soul Train.
Soul Train.
You're on Soul Train, right?
Yeah.
Well, obviously, what are you doing? You're three years younger than me, but you look 30 years younger. So whatever you're doing is right. I need to do something.
I'm at the wellness center almost every other day.
What can we do to help you?
Well, I'm asking for $30,000 to help replace the two chairs to get, because they're commercial. When we have people coming in, you know, using the chairs on a regular basis, we need the commercial chairs that will hold up and they have the warranty, and then they replace them. If anything ever goes wrong with them, they do have a warrant to replace them rather than us getting the lower-end massage chairs.
Do you have that?
Yes, sir.
Do you have to have appointments to come out there?
Yes, everyone has to make an appointment. We only allow, because we are small, and hopefully we can expand as time goes on and find a better space, a bigger space, because I can actually see about four or five infrared sauna systems because our sauna sits four, seats four people at a time. And it heats from the core to the outside of the body, very easy to breathe in, but it actually does raise the heart rate and everything. So it's really great for cardiovascular. It's basically, it is the most passive cardio workout.
What I'm getting at is, you know, I, the organizations that I support, I like to see what they're doing actually, like hands-on, so.
Well, come on.
I'm gonna need an appointment.
Can you send us to...
I'm gonna need...
That's your copy, yeah. Email it.
I'm gonna need an appointment.
Have you got Kendall's email address or Florence either one?
I sent over everything to...
Okay, to Florence, okay. Florence.
I got a copy of it.
Okay, you got it. Can you share?
I sent all the documents over, all of our...
Yeah, okay.
Where are you located?
It's 8448 Crossland Loop, Suite 155.
Make him pay. Make him pay.
Well, you got him, you said hands-on.
Our massage chairs...
He's gonna get there in the next hour.
Our zero-gravity massage chairs, you never have to come in human contact, which is great. And they go, they are the only chairs that go to 360 degrees, like the astronauts get into. So it takes all the stress off of the lower back. It has 360 airbags in the machine. It does the temple massage. It does three rotating foot massages. It does all the way to the glutes, which normally when you go to a massage there, you can't touch that area by mall, but the machine can. The chair can. So that...
Now, my massage therapist touches my glutes.
So it is free to the community, though, but you have to know.
As long as you give written consent.
And we have months for my sponsors to help us to pay operationally.
I need help.
So how do you, how do you get your referrals? I mean, of course, I haven't heard of you, and I guess Doug is perhaps the only one. Okay, just word of mouth.
What we do, Facebook marketing, we do Groupon. We have over 80 five-star reviews on Groupon. On Groupon, that's the book that I wrote. I'm a nutritional doctor, a holistic nutritional doctor. So I also help our members to establish a healthier eating lifestyle to actually put their bodies back in perfect balance. So you're just not coming in there just relaxing and detoxing and de-stressing, but you're also learning through our Zoom conferences we do, from churches. We do them for a lot of big groups. We even have groups from out of state that do them. But I am constantly on Zoom conferences trying to educate things that to help to keep the body, the immune system strong, and to fight against toxins and things like that that build up to cause cancer in the body. I've been doing this for 37 years. I've been in this industry, and I love it. I actually am very passionate about it.
Okay, thank you. I know, I know you're time's short, but you mentioned arts. And what are you doing with that part of it? The arts, taking the arts, do you take the, actually take the arts into, into our schools?
We have what's called the Art of Health Project. And with the Art of Health Project, it's called Eating Healthy is Cool. And so the, I'm just going to give these to you guys. I just made them up. I didn't put any help, just I wanted to put them in. Oh, I have some more too. But the Art of Health Project, we actually go into the school. We actually do interactive nutritional classes for the parents and the teachers and the students. And we actually portray different characters. So I'm Mama, who's a 96-year-old grandmother. And I have been eating healthy all of my life. I have a great weight gap for my whole character. And I go in and I'm teaching the kids because I go out to the grocery store and I have nothing but fruits and vegetables. Then my two sons, who are producers and musicians, they actually have written two songs that are dealing with healthy eating. And they perform for the kids, and the kids love it. And then we also have, and then I pull out all these fruits and vegetables, and they name the fruits and the vegetables, and they get rewarded, play games. So it's a very interactive program. In fact, Dallas County wanted to have us back right before COVID hit. And they were actually asking us to come back once a month to do it for the whole, whole county to teach that, that program. And then they're rewarded a banner. You would see in the package, there's a banner that says Eating Healthy is Cool. And they put it in the school. So the kids are reminded to eat more fruits and vegetables, fruits from the rainbow, what we call. So we, and we provide resources, again, the tower gardens. We're trying to make the schools a catalyst for the tower gardens for their community so that they will, the kids will have hands-on in actually planting the gardens, the tower gardens, and growing those foods. And then the schools can also make money from either cutting the fresh produce to the community. So it gives the schools some income, some revenue because the tower gardens come free to them. And we have a whole lesson plan based on the STEM system that teaches that to the children.
It's hard to believe. You've been around four years, and I, this is the first I've heard of it.
How long?
It really is.
Give me your number again. I'll get a phone.
334... This is my cell number, 451-1829.
But Dr. Duce, thank you. I apologize. We are up against time constraints, but thank you for coming in.
But thank you all so much for your time and for listening. I appreciate you guys. And I look forward to seeing you as community members. Luxury Body Sculpting. Yes, yes.
Florence, we got a few future agenda items. We need to run through those.
Item number four is to consider amendment number two to a contract with Citronet to extend the contract until June 30th, 2022. That's for Information Systems.
Next agenda.
Consider an alcohol license application for a retail restaurant liquor to Perilla Loca, located at 210 Wasden Road, Hopewell, Alabama.
Sheriff, are you familiar with that?
I know where it's at.
What do you think?
It's on, on premises. It's a restaurant. It's not, that could be a problem right there. Right there by, behind the hotel.
I'm trying to, I can't place it.
Yeah, on Wasden Road. Used to be a barbecue place. But I think it's just a, I believe it's gonna be a Mexican restaurant.
You were Elton's.
It's Elton's. Yeah. But I haven't heard anything from anybody objecting to it, so I hadn't heard any problems, so. So next agenda.
In your general information items, there's the ACCA Legislative Committee's 2022 County Legislative Report for March 4th, 2022. I believe that's all of our items.
So Florence, we'll go into the formal meeting, then do the executive session after the formal meeting?
Or I think it's a very brief session if you want to do it now.
Oh, three minutes? Okay, so we need to recess to executive session, and then we'll come back for the formal session, correct?
Yes, and so do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye. And those of you who are waiting to speak, please don't leave.